Option B is to set a hearing for an ordinance establishing face cover requirements for individuals in accordance with the CDC guidance when indoor spaces of public accommodation. This option, from our vantage point, is a traditional method of establishing an ordinance. This option is not recommended to take place prior to the meeting of July 13th, 2020, as you would be setting a date of hearing formally for this would require a plain majority of four council members and be enacted after 30 days from the date of its publication. So essentially, you would have to wait till at least July 13th, excuse me, July 13th, 2020, to have that public hearing. And then if it passed without substantial amendment, again, it cannot have substantial amendments, otherwise that passage would have to be delayed to the next regular meeting. And then at that point, 30 days after that, it would go into place. This, like any other traditional ordinance, it could be subject to a reverse referendum. So if there was 15% of the registered voters of the city of Mankato could submit a petition, which then would require a special vote on that petition, if it was a valid petition, and then it could only go into place if it essentially was affirmed by the electorate. So this is somewhat complicated. I would also point out that a traditional ordinance, I think there is some question about the validity of a traditional ordinance, because again, the face covering requirements would have to be tied to some type of emergency, and essentially, emergency ordinance then extends those requirements for renewable or rolling 60 days. I think that a traditional ordinance does pose some, there is some question whether it could be challenged, both the citations, the enforcement, and then, of course, the reverse referendum. So that, again, emphasizes only requires four votes to move forward with the actual adoption of that ordinance, unlike the emergency ordinance, which requires five members. Option C was an option developed by staff in looking at other cities. Rochester essentially put in place a campaign that strongly recommends face coverings be worn in places of indoor public accommodation, including, in this option, they put money forward to educate the public, the businesses, and even in some cases, essentially promoting the fact that they're following CDC guidelines for their employees, and they're urging masks by the public when they come into those accommodations. In some cases, they're even distributing masks to the public to accommodate that. The details of this certainly would have to be worked out. We would come back at the July 13th with a more detailed plan of exactly what the promotion effort would be. We would likely partner with Greater Mankato Growth. We'd probably partner with our medical community on that promotion. I would point out that even under options A and B, there probably would require some level of public education on mask wearing. So I would expect that you would have to expend a lot of money on education than just simply having our public safety officers respond to complaints, or business concerns, or individual concerns. We basically don't have the enforcement staff to spend a lot of extensive education responding to mask complaints. So there would be a fair amount of dollars that we would have to expend on that. Another thought might be on option three, is to add a provision that might be resolution to the governor, urging the governor to consider statewide guidance on mask wearing. As we found in even Tobacco 21, you know, Mankato is a regional center, so there is a fair amount of outside commerce coming into the city, and it would make sense, and a lot of the objections that we've heard so far would be, they would not come to Mankato or go to other areas if they were required to wear masks. Additionally, the ordinance A or B would not be included in coverage at the state campuses, such as Minnesota State University, or any other state institution, because essentially, those state higher ed institutions are governed by the state law. So we would not have jurisdiction over their use of masks, or their usage of masks unless the students were off campus. And then option D is simple adjournment and take no action. That's a privileged motion. It requires a second and does require a vote. But essentially, you could move to adjourn, take no action, and not consider A, B, or C. What we would recommend is that the public comment, not that we're going to defer this, but if we're moving forward with action items at future council meetings, such as reporting back on the campaign, or actually conducting the hearing on option A or B, that that public comment be reserved for those meetings, and not at this meeting, not to stifle it, but we would be taking very specific action in approving a campaign, or approving a traditional ordinance, or emergency ordinance on one of those two dates. Again, I would recommend, at this point, that the council reserve, at this point, kind of before putting a debate of a motion on the table, that we have the opportunity to answer any questions, or identify any concerns, perhaps as a matter of order going around to each individual council member, and then after the questions on any of the actions are considered and answered, then it would be appropriate time to put a motion on the table for actual debate by the council. So at this point, Mayor, essentially, we don't have anything to add. I may have called upon Allison to answer any questions during this segment where the council has any concerns or questions. Either myself or Allison will field those. And then at that point, once all the council has had an opportunity to answer the questions or concerns, that would be the appropriate time for a motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Henges. Council members, as you heard, I think we would like to hear from everyone, questions if they have them. First of all, I'd like to start with Karen. I think you're probably one of the first ones on the table. Do you have any questions concerning any of these four options for staff?
I have one comment and one question. According to Minnesota State University Mankato website, they are going to be requiring masks on campus, just as an information item. And secondly, you had numbers in here that it looks like you assumed there would be seven people. Since there are only six of us, how does that change what the numbers are? For instance, it would be a simple majority to simply call for a public hearing on July 6th. Could staff comment on that? We don't have seven people here.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you still require an emergency ordinance, five members. And on a traditional ordinance, you have to have a quorum of four people, but you always have to have four, minimum of four votes to move an ordinance forward, a traditional ordinance.
And to set a date of public hearing, you need four people to vote in the affirmative.
That would be a majority of the six. Thank you. That answers my questions.
Okay. Councilmember Frost, do you have any questions for the four?
The $50,000 in the C thing is, that is the COVID funding from the federal government. Am I correct or not?
We could, it's my understanding, it could be used for this, or we would have to use the $100,000, or the $1 million, which there is some left. But we could, it would be eligible, we believe, under the COVID care funding.
And we would include Mayo Clinic, Mankato Clinic. Anybody else?
We would certainly ask, yes.
Okay. And let's see here, one other, sorry. That's it for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did Councilmember Layman, was he able to get on at all, phone wise, or anyway? I have not seen him enter. I have not received a response to email or to text.
Yes, and Madam Mayor, I did text him on another number I have from him, and he has not responded to that text.
All right, that's fine. Thank you so much. Councilmember Deacon, do you have any comments or questions about the four that are in front of us?
Yes, thank you. I have a question. Earlier, Pat, you mentioned an administrative, in some of the enforcement part of the first two options. Could you explain more, what is meant by administrative write-up, or what the term was?
Well, administrative write-up, we have administrative charge for licensed establishments, and it typically would be $200 charge for violation to their licenses. So these would be typical over occupancy licenses, and we could incorporate in our schedule of charges of administrative fines, 200 being the lowest. We could incorporate a administrative charge for a violation of this ordinance, either by the employer not requiring his employees who are in service to wear masks, or alternatively permitting customers on the place of public accommodation to frequent that establishment without masks. Typically, $200 is the lowest administrative charge.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Okay, Councilmember Melby Kelly, Jen, do you have any questions for staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to the members that are here tonight. Thank you for the city staff that are here tonight. I have some comments that I wanted to make. I wanted to let everyone know why I asked for this meeting tonight. And the reason that I asked for this meeting is because we are in the middle of a global pandemic. This is actually a public health crisis. We are seven leaders in the city of Mankato, and we need to make a decision tonight to help our community to stay safe. 128,000 people have died in the United States since COVID-19 started less than six months ago. 10.2 million people have tested positive for COVID-19 across the world. In Mankato alone, last week, we had 100 positive cases related to bars and restaurants here in Mankato, specifically connected to June 12th and 13th, days after opening to 50% capacity. And my question is, why did three of you say no to having a discussion about this issue? And I wanted to do something else. I wanted to grab, oh, wait. What if I was in the middle of the city council chambers, and I lit up a cigarette? And each and every one of you would tell me, I need to put it out, or I need to go outside. And do you want to know why? Because you voted for an ordinance in 2006 for the Indoor Clean Air Act, to stop people from smoking inside. We got the same arguments then. People didn't want to come here and spend their money in our businesses. They were saying that this was against their civil liberties, to tell them that they cannot smoke inside a building. And you know what smokers do? They go outside, or they go across the street, or they go down the block. The city council in Mankato passed that ordinance in 2006. The Tobacco 21 ordinance came to us two years ago, and we discussed it, and we looked at that ordinance. I had people come into me telling me that I had no right to tell them whether they can purchase cigarettes before the age of 21. I had a state representative come to me and tell me that I would be on the wrong side of history if I did not vote for that ordinance. And that ordinance at that time was not written well. I disagreed with penalizing people and criminalizing people under the age of 21 for smoking cigarettes. It got voted down. It came back to us last year. The ordinance was rewritten by the city to make it about the transaction only, and we voted that through. The Tobacco 21 ordinance went through. We were ahead of the game in 2006, and we were ahead of the game last year. And I'm wondering why we are not making the decision, or why we haven't made a decision before. Karen talked to us in the beginning of June and said, we should talk about this. Nobody wanted to talk about it. And when we decided to have this discussion last week, it almost didn't get seconded. And I was wondering why? Why would we have not seconded this discussion? I also want to talk a little bit about businesses here in Mankato. More than 10 businesses have closed down since the opening at 50% capacity. And that's concerning to me. They're closing down because of positive cases of COVID-19. I will tell you that the people that are making an argument to me right now, that we're going to lose business if we require masking or face coverings in businesses, I don't agree with that, because I think it's harder for small businesses to close down, to clean things up, and then to reopen. It's expensive, and they're losing business. Our job as a city council is to take care of our community. It is our job to make sure that everyone is safe, that everyone wants to be here, and I would like them to live. And the other thing that I have to say is, I still have an extended family member that is in ICU. She's been in there for 35 days. She's gotten a tracheotomy. My sister was on the phone with her the other night, and she started to choke because she couldn't breathe through her tracheotomy. My sister saw that. I challenge anyone that tells me that wearing a mask is not worth it. I challenge them to call her on Zoom and tell her why. I challenge anybody to call her husband and tell him why they don't think we should wear masks. If I wear a mask, or a face covering, and you wear a mask or a face covering, we lower the risk exponentially of sharing COVID-19 with each other. I am a small business owner. I require my staff to wear masks. They wash their hands after every transaction. They sanitize. They wear gloves if they're anywhere near their espresso machines, and they never complain about wearing masks. I can tell you, I've never gotten an email or a phone call from a doctor, or a nurse, or a lab tech that had to wear a mask all day long. They have never said to me, I think it's unfair. We expect them to wear masks. We expect our food, our food service, to wear masks. Why can't we expect our customers to give us the same respect? If I'm in a room, a 10 by 10 room, with two people that are dealing with lung issues, and I light up a cigarette, and I blow it in their face, I am going against their civil liberties. I have no right to do that. I don't want people blowing their COVID-19 germs in my face. Let's wear a face covering. Let's support each other. It's about kindness. This is not about money. This is not about politics. It's not about who you voted for. This is about people. It's about our community. We need to keep people safe, and I wonder why we didn't want to have this conversation before. Let us get this done tonight. We've done this before. Mark Frost, when we had the Tobacco 21 discussion, you said, I can't believe we're talking about this. Kids under the age of 21 should not be smoking. This is a no-brainer. You had no problem making that vote. And people were telling us, we had no right to do it, but we still did it because we care about our community. We've done it before. Let's do it. Let's do our jobs as the leaders in this town, because people are looking to us for support and answers. And with that, I am done, and I would make a motion for option D. Thank you so much.
We're not going to take a motion now, Councilmember Melby Kelly. We're just going to go right now through, and we're going to listen. We still have Councilmember Hatampa that had not had a chance to speak, so I'm not going to put the motion on the table right now, because we are not done with all the council members. I do appreciate your comments, and you bet. Now we'll move on to Councilmember Hatampa, please. Any questions or comments?
First, I do have a question regarding the governor's stay safe order, and the requirements to the bars and restaurants of social distancing, that the number of people is at 50%, up to 250, but it still says that you have to be able to maintain six-foot distance. So I've been sent a lot of pictures from our downtown bars, and can you answer whether or not the governor's orders are enforceable, number one, that they're already currently in place? And number two, if we are enforcing them, what have we done, or why aren't we?
At this point in time, we are unable to be at the bars on all the hours they are opening. So we've rotated through. We've observed where there is not social distancing. For the most part, we believe that the maximum capacity, because their capacity is based on fire code, is being met. But again, there is particularly bars that do not serve consistently food or food throughout the night. There are patrons moving around the bars, not observing the social distancing.
But I thought you had to have a reservation, so how can you make a reservation to?
Well, that is happening. They're coming to the door, asking for a table, if a table is available, and then given that table, but they are moving around the bar on a regular basis. So it's, you know, I would say that from the governor's standpoint, if we were to do this, it would be that essentially, in places that do not serve food, that essentially you will have to be given a spot at a table, and you essentially, if you move from a table to another location in the bar, that that cannot have social distancing occurring.
And that doesn't already exist?
I don't believe it exists on a regular basis, and it would be virtually impossible for our public safety people to stand there and be the social distance police. I would think that a more appropriate, and I don't think it would be necessarily accepted, but bars require that all the patrons sit in an actual seat.
I mean, I guess that's what I'm kind of asking, is if these already exist, and we are having problems enforcing or not being able to, I want to understand what is the issue right now with enforcing what apparently already exists, you know, before we?
Well, I don't think that we have the staffing power from the police department to essentially sit at the doors, and every time we observe a cluster of bar patrons or restaurant patrons coming together, going from one table to another table, or a cluster of tables, we would have the staffing to enforce that. The bars certainly have security staff that can deal with that. But I think the other point that I would point out is, just a 50% occupancy of an indoor space for a bar is a lot different arrangement than it is for a restaurant. Bars' capacities are based upon 50% with social distancing. And so at a restaurant, you're there for a meal. You generally are not getting up and going and interacting or socializing with another table on a regular basis. In bars, they are socializing amongst their seated area. So if they have stools at the bar, and they're six feet apart, you may be getting up and going to a table of people, or playing a game of pool in that type of establishment. And we're seeing that on a regular basis in places that are not regularly serving food all hours of the night.
I just have a comment, I guess. I called our county attorney and had a conversation with Mr. McDermott today, so I could understand what the implications, the legal implications would be. And he did say that if we pass this, it would be a misdemeanor that would require a court appearance, that for anyone 10 to 12 years old, depending upon their maturity, through 17, they would need to appear in juvenile court. So if their parents didn't force them to wear a mask, or they were caught at the ice cream shop, they would be required to appear in court. And just, I think everyone cares about the community, and everyone wants to do what's right. I wear a mask, it doesn't bother me. There's a variety of reasons why it does bother people, but I don't think that it is helpful, and that it is bringing our community together to criminalize people, to have neighbors calling on each other and making this a criminal incident, when I feel that there are maybe other ways that we can provide education, that we can, even when the COVID task force was on the news last Friday, they said, we have found that more local messaging from local leaders and local officials works better than just the national messaging. And I don't want to divide our community any further on this issue, and making it a criminal act. So that's all I have.
Mayor, if I could just add one thing, and also let you know that Mr. Layman has joined in your meeting, is that for the incidences where public safety has engaged with business, they have looked at addressing it from a business perspective with the strike matrix, which is for similar types of violations. And the other challenge is, it does specifically say in those guidelines for bars and restaurants, that it's six feet between tables. That's what the specific guideline says, and so for some of those bars and restaurants where it's not a table, I think whether that's being construed differently, or should be construed differently, I think that is a part of the challenge with the guidelines, and how they apply to tens of thousands of businesses across Minnesota being slightly different. But public safety has addressed those in the same manner they would a traditional strike penalty for the business. Thank you, Allison. Councilmember Layman, are you online right now?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I am.
You weren't with us to begin with. Staff did give us, I'm sure you had it in your packet, the four different options, and right now, we're just asking staff questions, and we're doing some comments. So if you would like to either ask a question or a comment, please do so.
Oh, thank you. Well, you know, my apologies for the delay, but for me, this to me is a public health issue. You know, that's where we're at. I guess I, Mayor, do you want comments related to any one of the four options, or are you looking for?
No, just more questions to staff, and then what your feelings are, probably. But we're not doing any motions right at this moment.
I understand that. So, well...
Any questions for staff about any of the four?
I have no questions for the staff at this point.
Do you have any comments?
Yes, I do. I recall back in 2006, when a member of the council that I was, and we were faced with a community health issue then, and we were asked to consider banning indoor smoking at bars and restaurants. We heard the cries and pleas from the community that it would hurt businesses. Some claimed they would close. People said they would take their business elsewhere. We were doing this wrong. We were overreaching. This isn't the role of a city council. It's government overreach. We're taking away rights. We're taking away freedoms. But not only were we ahead of the state of Minnesota, but we were also right in that this was, people who were smoking were impacting other people's health, whether it be servers or other patrons. whether it be servers or other patrons. And I can't think of a better visual example of what's happening with the spread of COVID from person to person. When you have someone expelling smoke, a cloud leaves their mouth and goes across an area and then slowly dissipates. And that's what's happening with COVID when you're not wearing a mask. A mask prevents you from spreading it at distance. And when you're close together to people, a mask prevents you from spreading it. So I guess I struggle with those on the council that would say that, "Oh, this is wrong," as I heard Ms. Hatampa. I mean, I would have our public safety people clarify, but I don't recall us ever arresting anyone or citing one for smoking in a bar or restaurant. And we worked diligently with the business community to help them understand their role and responsibilities. And our community went through that pretty seamlessly and effortlessly. So I would ask you to consider a pretty straightforward process of protecting our community. It's a global pandemic. People are becoming sick and dying. I don't want to be a participant in that. And I would think that the rest of us would also want to avoid such a thing. And we're asking to put in a ordinance that would help further our ability to communicate and work together as a community during a global pandemic. I just, again, I'm just struggling with why we would have to have concern about, in Representative Hatampa's case, the enforcement, when the reality is, is that this would be a compliance. Whether you look at the anecdotal social media posts and certainly the surveys we were given, everyone who's not wearing a mask is enough people to be concerned. It's not everyone's wearing a mask, it's those that don't want to wear a mask or the presumption they can't wear a mask. That just, that tells me that unfortunately, our community needs us to take action. And that's what the community is truly asking us to do. Compliance needs to be adhered to, and that's really what we're doing. That's all, Madam Mayor, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Levin. My two cents in this, I do have a couple of questions. But as you know, I wear two hats, the business hat and the mayor hat. The business aspect of it is when we're told that we have to comply with it 100%, we do that in our businesses. But it's the person that's entering our business that does not want to wear that mask and comes in and we get notified by the Public Safety that we were not in compliance. Then what happens to our business? We're getting penalized because someone is doing something that is required of them, but they refuse to do that. So that's a very difficult situation. We have our, I'm just going to use JP Fitness as an example. When they're inside, and this is a question to you, Mr. Hendges. In JP Fitness, when I'm inside and I'm exercising and so forth, do I have to wear a mask? How are these people that are going to be doing the physical things? How can they wear a mask doing something like this? So what is the criteria? What is, what is safe inside a place and not safe inside of a place? Everybody wears masks in and out? So how does that work?
If the business is open to the publics, the public can come in without an appointment. Or in the case of a fitness, if it's open without scheduled appointments, they would be required to wear a mask.
But there would be like, okay, I'm going to take the one that's by, where Barnes and Noble used to be, Fitness for Ten or whatever. There's more than one person. JP Fitness, let's say they can have one or two people six feet apart. But in a place like the other one, how does that?
But they're limited in the amount of people, as I understand it, at any given time. So in other words, if I don't belong to whatever fitness group and I currently have not made a reservation to go there, that, and that's something we could investigate further upon the final ordinance. But it would be my interpretation, a mask would not be required. Businesses can require them. Their workers may in fact have to wear them. But if it's upon a limited amount of public access, where I just cannot walk in and begin exercising, because I'm not a member or I don't have an appointment, that would not be necessarily under the strictest interpretations of public accommodation. We certainly could look at that in terms of final amendments and define that even further. But as I read, public accommodation, it is a certain amount of unlimited access or restricted access in terms of occupancy that will be looked at.
Okay. And as for like the bars and so forth that have not complied, I'm going to go back to Councilmember Hatampa when she said, we're not penalizing these people, but they are putting a bad name on everybody else's business. Whether it's mine or somebody else's, but there's no, I mean, we slap them on the hand and that's it? Then they have to close for two days? What, and I know Public Safety can't, I know they can't. But there has to be something, there has to be something to put a stop to that.
Well, I would probably tell you this. In terms of enforcement, first of all, we have not shut down any bar. They have made decisions to shut themselves down and take certain precautions. But we can enforce requiring of all of the patron, all of the, excuse me, staff that is in service to be wearing masks. That's number one. Number two is I would go back to Ms. Hatampa's comments that it really needs to be operated in a bar very much like a restaurant. It's kind of butts in the seats. And if you don't have your butt in the seat, you can't be free roaming. And if you're free roaming, you certainly, when you come into the bar and you get seated and when you get up to go to the restroom or to go someplace, you are, have a mask on. That's a very easy enforcement tool. But the bigger issue would be clearly defining in the case of occupancy, restricted occupancy, and we can incorporate this as an amendment to it, is that if the bars are open for business, they're limited by the number of seats that are socially distanced in that bar, except for tables of four or six. And that would be socially distanced. We've had a occupational medicine doctor review our workspace here. And the point was, it wasn't the fire code occupancy, but he said that approximately every person in an office setting or in a meeting setting or an open setting indoors has to have about 127 square feet, which is the size of a bedroom. And that determines occupancy. Obviously, state orders, executive orders, have allowed that to be clustered in small groups. But it is, you know, basically, that's about what you would need to determine occupancy. And that is a greater requirement for occupancy than 50% of, you know, essentially floor occupancy that a fire code allows. So it would greatly reduce occupancies if we were using that number. But nevertheless, a way to define this, if you add a face mask ordinance, would be to require every patron of that bar essentially to be in a seated location that is socially distanced or allowed within a pod of people in that occupancy. And except however, all the service staff, all the waitstaff would have to have face masks. And the patrons, when they get up from their tables, would have to have face mats to go to the restroom or to the, wherever they're going to go.
Okay. Because yes, because I would find that pretty difficult to have masks on in restaurants or in bars drinking. My question also is for the, for the first one. And A, when you said it's like, I believe A or B, it was the 60 days, you know, that it lasts 60 days. But if we see that the COVID-19 numbers are going down, can we lessen the 60 days, make it into just the 30 days or whatever it is?
Seventy-two hour notice, you could have a vote to essentially five members to cease the ordinance or withdraw the ordinance. Just as, just on the 60th day, you could, if you had 72 hours notice, to extend it with five affirmative votes.
All right, thank you. I think all the comments now have been done. Are there any other questions or comments that you want to make before we do? I see your hand up, Councilmember Frost.
Just to answer Jen on some of her questions about smoking and like, we've got about 150 years of evidence of what happens with smoking, between COPD, cancer, and so on and so forth. This has been kind of an up and down. I mean, Mike Osterholm, Minnesota epidemiologist, just came out and said that masks cover you for a little while and then they don't work that well after that. That was one of his statements. It's just, there is a lot of confusing information out there about what's going on, and I understand that. I was a pharmacist during the AIDS epidemic, watched a lot of people die because we had no answers to what was happening to them. We came up with answers and it slowed that process dramatically. Plus, it's helped the rest of us because we've got antiviral drugs now that can take care of viruses. We didn't have that before. When I went to college, I was told that if you got a virus, it's the same as your DNA or whatever. And you have to kill that virus, you're going to have to kill your own DNA. Well, the AIDS epidemic actually solved that to a large extent. And we've got a lot of very safe, very effective antiviral drugs out there right now. As far as Jessica, your question on the governor, the suggestion, his information to us was a suggestion. It wasn't a law. It was never passed by the state, state house or the state senate. So?
Wait, 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 let him finish, then you can comment.
So you saw a lot of cities that opened up their playgrounds well before we did so that people could get their kids in there and get them out of the house for a little while after being cooped up for the last three to six months or whatever. So, you know, that is, that is just the way things are. The governor's rules or whatever you want to call them are just suggestions. And there's going to be no penalty and there's nothing because it's not a law. But I got one question, Pat. And as part of this ordinance, how does somebody prove that they cannot wear a mask? Do they have to have a doctor's note? Do they have to have, what, are we just taking their word for it or what's going on?
In essence, because again, this process, they would have to have some type of medical condition. But understand that the first citation process or enforcement process is a warning. So it is simply a warning. A warning to the business, it is a warning to the individual before a citation is issued. And we can do that in the form of a documented warning citation, if we have a warning ticket. There is a method that we could issue that. And then we would hope if someone says, "Well, I just can't medically wear it," they certainly could prove that out as a condition if they were ever issued a citation.
Okay. Thank you.
One second, Councilmember Hatampa, I'm going to give you a chance to speak. Miss Foreman had her hand up quite a bit. So if you can just bear with me just a little bit, her hand has been up before even Mr. Frost spoke. So Councilmember Foreman, you want to say something before I have Councilmember Hatampa make her comment?
I don't have a question. Are we at the point, Mayor, where you're looking for a motion?
I'm going to, not yet, because I did tell Councilmember Hatampa that she was able to comment. So I'm going to let her go first, please. Councilmember Hatampa, please.
I just wanted to clarify, when, Mark, what I was saying is part of the governor's stay safe home executive order. So not recommendations, it was actually, that was what I was trying to get an answer to the question is because it's actually listed in his executive order, which I believe makes it then a law and is therefore already enforceable. And that was what I was trying to get clarification on is if it's already a law, why aren't we enforcing it? What are the challenges? If we already have a law that we're not being able to enforce, adding more? That's what I was trying to clarify.
Okay.
Okay. Did you, was that a question? I'm sorry, go ahead, Allison.
The governor's stay safe order, those, the stay safe order, while we remain in a peacetime emergency, do remain law. Much like your emergency ordinances would remain law.
I see, Councilmember Deacon, you have your hand up, please. Dennis? You're on mute.
Okay, excuse me. Thank you. Yes, you know, as far as the enforcement goes, when it, when there is a nonconformance, in order to bring law enforcement into it, and you know, we talked about about the administrative write-up or whatever the, whatever the charge might be, law enforcement at that point has to be brought into it. And who would be doing that? Would that be the business, of course, that would be calling them into this? And then what would be? That's my question, thank you.
In the case of a restaurant or a bar, they are licensed, if they serve liquor, are a licensed establishment. And so if we observed or we received a complaint of patrons not abiding by a mask ordinance or any other ordinance, if we believe there was sufficient grounds to charge them, we would more than likely charge them with an administrative fine using the matrix. If it was a nonlicensed establishment and we saw kind of mass, you know, patrons and the service workers at the establishment not wearing masks and we received a complaint, we would probably issue a citation to the business. If it was an individual that refused to leave the premises, was asked to wear a mask and refused to leave, we would probably issue them a citation for not wearing a mask, warn them, certainly if that was the first step, and also suggest, as we do with any types of behaviors, that the business has the option to trespass them in the future. So that's what I would see the typical enforcement measure. So you just kind of have to look at it from that perspective. If the business said, you know, we've tried to, you know, we had numerous customers coming in and they just refused to wear, can you help us out in terms of clearing it? Or it would be, again, it's probably, we would ask that the patron leave and ask that the business trespass them. Again, so I mean, that's the measures that we've had. It probably in all cases would start with a warning. And as I mentioned, even in the case of these individual patrons that aren't cooperating, the two instances where businesses, and I'm aware, it resulted in a behavior by the patron, some action by the patron other than, you know, because there's no, the business was requiring the wearing of the mask and the patron refused or? uh, refused or otherwise acted out in some manner that was unacceptable. So they were more than likely, among other things, if it was an assault of another patron, that's one thing. It probably resulted in a trespass also.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Did that? Okay. Um, Councilmember Hattama, I did see your hand up. Did you have a question? All right. Thank you. Now that everybody had, um, their time to ask questions and make their comments, do I have a motion on the table?
I would make a motion. Are we taking, we taking the original one from Jessa, or from Jen or what?
If it, you need to put a motion on the table for, and it has to be seconded, whatever that motion is.
Okay. I would make a motion that we take item C, the education using Medicaid Clinic and Mayo Clinic to help educate people. I was in Walmart today. There's a lot more people wearing masks. And I think that would work to a large extent without over, over, overdoing our, um, overstepping our bounds. Let's put it that way.
Do I have a second on that?
I will second.
Okay. Councilmember Frost made the motion to, um, recommend option C. Councilmember Deacon seconded. Do I have any, any more comments or any questions before we take roll? I, Councilmember Foreman, I see your hand up. I, it was, um, yours, Councilmember Frost had his hand up. That's why I did not call on you, um, for that. Any comments? No comments? No questions? All right. Renee, if you could do roll call, please.
I just want to note that there is one hand up in the attendees. It has been for a while. And I don't know if it's to speak to this option, but that would be the only way that I would, that they would be brought in.
Okay. Um...
Oh, the hand just went down.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Do you see any other hands? I can't see it very well.
No.
All right. Okay, I had a motion and then I had a second. Renee, will you do roll call, please?
Miss Hattama?
Yes.
Mr. Deacon?
Yes.
Miss Melby Kelly?
No.
Mr. Frost?
Yes.
Mr. Laven?
No.
Miss Foreman?
No.
Is that a no? Mayor Massad?
Okay, we have, uh, the...
You have to vote.
Yes, I know I have to vote.
Um... It's currently tied.
I know that. Um, if, and that, this is a question for you, Pat. I know I have to make my decision. But whether if it's no, it goes into, um, a different motion, correct?
No. Yeah, if it, if the motion passes, it moves forward. We will come back with the details of the campaign on July thirteenth. You're going to have more discussion at that point. If it, if it fails, uh, in other words, there are four opposing votes to this emotion. It fails and then another motion could be considered by the council.
After this?
Correct. After the passage or only if it fails.
Okay. Um, I'm going to say no.
No.
No to the...
No to the motion. No, no, no to option C.
Okay. Then it, uh, it doesn't...
For lack of a majority.
It does not have a majority to pass, therefore is there an alternative motion?
Is there an alternative motion?
Madam Mayor, this is Jen Melby Kelly. I would like to motion for option A.
We have option A. Do I have a second on?
This is Karen. I'll second that motion.
Councilmember Melby Kelly made a motion to adopt option A. Councilmember Karen Foreman, second.
And can I just clarify that option A would be to set a public hearing for consideration of an emergency ordinance for face covering and that date of hearing be on July seventh, and that would be the time for public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
July... Any, do we have any comments or questions before we go do roll call?
It would be July, July sixth, excuse me.
July sixth, yes.
Do I have any comments or, or any questions about this motion?
Madam Mayor, uh, this is Councilmember Laven.
Yes.
I, I, I want to make sure that my colleagues understand. If you're voting against setting a public hearing, you're stopping the community from weighing in on an issue. I just want to make sure I'm very clear with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Foreman, you have your hand up. Do you have a question or?
No, no, I don't know. Sorry. I apologize. So, can I ask a question?
Please, please.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, in, in options A or B, a vote for it, for it right now does not mean that it is necessarily a vote for it to pass?
Correct. It's solely setting a date of public hearing, which provides the public forum for everyone, for the public to speak. So we would have a process with the timer generally, and, and so people would get their, they would state their name. We would bring them in. They would have their, typically we've done two or three minutes, uh, for each speaker, pro or con. And they would be speaking specifically to that ordinance, which would be published.
So this is only for A. It's not, okay. So it would have to be?
Just to set the date of public hearing, much like to set the date of a public hearing.
If A doesn't pass, there could be a motion for B?
Correct. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, Renee, will you do roll call, please?
Miss Hattama?
No.
Mr. Deacon?
No.
Miss Melby Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Frost?
No.
Mr. Laven?
Yes.
Miss Foreman?
Yes.
Mayor Massad?
Yes.
Just to clarify, that did not pass because five yes votes are required?
No, only four votes are required to set the date of public hearing. Five votes are required to actually approve an emergency...
Well, I thought it was either way.
I thought we had to have five.
No.
Well...
The way that our city ordinance reads, you need only, you need four, you would need four votes to set a date of public hearing. And that would open for a public hearing. For an emergency ordinance to pass, whether you had seventy-two hours of notice or seventy-two days of notice, you need five affirmative votes in order for it to be enacted immediately. And so that is the difference, is that an emergency ordinance takes effect immediately. And because of the emergency nature of the ordinance, it requires five affirmative votes because it doesn't provide that same thirty-day waiting period that a typical regular ordinance would provide. So what, what you do by setting, setting the date of hearing is you create the opportunity for the public forum for that emergency ordinance to be considered. But to move forward with it as an emergency, with it enacted immediately, with this, which would likely be important in a pandemic for face covering ordinance, you do need five affirmative votes, whether you have five people on this call or seven people on this call, um, from the city council, you would still have to meet the five affirmative threshold in order to pass any emergency ordinance. But you don't need five to set a public hearing. The public hearing creates the forum to make the vote on the ordinance. And the ordinance, if approved with five votes, as an emergency ordinance, could become effective on the following, essentially immediately following that affirmative vote.
But if it does not get five votes, it is not an effective ordinance in the case of an emergency ordinance at the time of the, after the hearing.
This just gives the public a chance to...
And, and I'm totally fine with that. I just, it says here five, and so I thought that, uh, that's why I was more...
No, no, the, the, no, the five will be for next on the sixth, when we need to have five council members vote either for or against. That's at that time. Right now, we're just saying that we're going to do a public, uh, um, or open public forum or public hearing set on the sixth, so that people can come in and weigh in.
So that was the only difference between A and B was just whether it was the sixth or the thirteenth?
The difference, if I may, the difference between A and B is in a regular ordinance, if you were considering a regular ordinance, you wouldn't want to follow all of your typical rules to publish, have seven days of it published in a newspaper, have, so which usually takes about two weeks to get it published in the newspaper for people to see, to know that it's happening. Then you have your public hearing. The ordinance approved in a normal fashion has a thirty-day waiting period. So no matter what, under a normal establishment of an ordinance, you have a thirty-day waiting period unless you adopt it as an emergency. And so in a normal ordinance, you can pass a normal ordinance, a normal ordinance with, with thirty-day waiting period. And during that thirty-day waiting period, before the ordinance becomes effective and it's been published per RCD code, that is the option for a citizen. The citizens have an opportunity to go to referendum, to go to some sort of reconsideration. The city council could reconsider. So the, the, there's a very big difference between an emergency. It provides a very different opportunity for the council in an emergency situation, such as a pandemic, to have something take effect very quickly that has a short period of time. It cannot last longer than sixty days unless that same five affirmative vote threshold is met again within that sixty days. So if, for example, the vote was four-three on Monday, the sixth, for an emergency ordinance requiring face coverings, it would not pass.
So with, by not, but just so I clarify, so by not, but if B, if, if in theory B had passed, it would only require a four-three for B to have passed, where A will require, okay?
But it would not have been able to be effective for...
Correct. I, and I understand that part. I just, the difference in the...
All of those things come into play.
Okay.
All right, so...
Do you see a hand up from Mr. Deacon?
Now I do, yes. Councilmember Deacon, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I wanted to make it clear that I'm also, I'm not opposed to public input, um, on this matter at all. Um, I, I think that, uh, you know, I was, uh, looking for option C, um, because it's a step before the ordinance was my thinking there. But I just want to clear that, I just want to clear that, uh, I'm not opposed to, to public input on this, so, thank you.
Thank you. I believe...
Mr. Deacon, was you, was that a yes vote, Mr. Deacon then, or did you vote no?
No, he already voted no. That's already done.
Okay.
We're done with that. It is going to move forward. We are going to have it on July sixth. But he just wanted to let the public know that he was not against a public hearing. So that's, I believe that's correct. Um, Councilmember Deacon?
Yes, that's exactly.
I think, I think we all feel the same way.
I, absolutely, absolutely. We want, the citizens are, are people we, we do want to hear them. We do want to listen to them. That's why we are passing that. That is why we are, I believe the council is an excellent council and we're all on the same page when it comes to the citizens. We are not against each other in that aspect of it. We do want the, uh, input of the citizens and we will get it. And coming on the July sixth, we will do the vote. And however we vote, that is how we vote. Um, I believe everyone has the, uh, the citizens and this community utmost in their mind. So I don't believe anybody that votes yes or no can be criticized for how they vote. It's just how they vote and how they feel. That's my two cents on that. And do we have anything else on the agenda?
Mayor, Mayor Massad? May I just add, uh, so what we will do is make sure, again, that the ordinance in its entirety be posted on our website immediately tomorrow. We've, we, we don't require the newspaper publication like we would in a traditional ordinance, but we will post it and on the different medians. Secondarily, uh, we will develop a very fine process, fine-tuned process of, of how the public can interact, uh, via a series of two-minute or three-minute intervals of which we will take that. We will, uh, likely encourage the public to sign up ahead of time as much as possible, so we know that if they do want to speak in favor or against, uh, that they, uh, we know that they're there and, yeah, we can somehow sort out their, uh, phone numbers. But that's not going to, we'll just give, um, opportunity to, to go down the line and do that. So we'll, we'll provide some additional guidance to the public and to the council on the orderly process, because I suspect that you will have a lot of interest, uh, tuning in and zooming in for this meeting as, uh, we will have in, uh, we've had in the past.
Thank you, Pat. Appreciate that. So is there any other questions before I take a motion adjourned? Councilmember Hattama, please?
Uh, just to clarify, so the, the money that we had talked about for education, that now is totally off the table. There can't be any, no matter whether we vote for or against this resolution, the education piece, the fifty thousand dollars, the, all of that is just totally off the table?
I believe when, um, city manager, um, was talking about it, that no matter if we chose option A or option, option B, there would be some, there has to be some education into it. Am I correct, Pat?
Well, I, I would think at the middle, we're going to have to come out with some immediate guidance to the businesses, clearly. And, um, we may have some options, uh, for the council to consider, such as some initial, uh, potential for paying for some complimentary masks if we can get a hold of them and have that money coming. But we do have COVID money and that would certainly be eligible as an enforcement measure. So, um, we'll, we will look at that. Uh, but the first thing is we would probably have as very comprehensive mailing going out. We'll also fine tune, if there's an amendment, we can, we can, uh, pass an emergency ordinance with amendment. We'll look at some of the health club issues, tightening that up. Perhaps even the bar/restaurant issues, tightening that up in terms of when you would have to have your mask on or off in those establishments.
Okay. Any other questions for that? So right now, we are not going to open it up for a public forum because we are going to be coming back on July sixth. And that will have, at that point, all, uh, the public will be having a chance to speak. But I will ask now and I will tell them later, well, it's only going to limit it to probably about two minutes because I'm sure there's going to be quite a bit of people. And, uh, if like two or three friends know each other and they want to say on behalf of such and such a person that we would appreciate that. Now, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm going to adjourn.
Second.
Councilmember, uh, Karen Foreman made a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Frost seconded. Renee, will you do roll call?
Mr. Tampa?
Yes.
Mr. Deacon?
Yes.
Miss Melby Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Frost?
Yes.
Mr. Laven?
Yes.
Miss Foreman?
Yes.
Mayor Massad?
Yes. Thank you, everyone.